Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the board meeting. Now everybody's have roll call.
Mr. Panaro, here. Ms. Grossak?
Here.
Ms. Greed?
Here.
Mr. Hess?
Here.
Mr. Tressi?
Here.
I believe we have some friends to help us with the pledge of allegiance.
Yes, three students that I spoke to today that are going to help us with the pledge.
Come on up.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with whose liberty and justice for all.
Before you guys get started, I do have a spoiler alert. We are going to be having a persuading in our new bylaws. However, the previous are in effect. And so we will, as we did last time, wait for the public comments section and talk after seven minutes. For everybody's enlightenment. Go ahead.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. My name is Christina and I'm a principal here at Center Elementary School. I want to say thank you to everyone that joined us tonight for the coffee talk and/or the ribbon cutting ceremony. Before we start with our spotlight, I would like to recognize the eight students who helped us with the ribbon cutting and the tour today. So if you're part of the principal's advisory committee, could you stand up so we can say thank you? I also want to mention how awesome those students are because the whole handshaking down the line, we didn't teach them that. That happens to come from home and some awesome parents that have taught that and how to be incredibly polite in this type of situation. So thank you to the parents here that helped make that happen. Thank you so much. I have the pleasure of introducing some spotlight students and spotlight staff members for all of you. And firstly, I have Kishan Shait. Kishan is a student who strives for excellence every day that he walks into Center Elementary. Kishan is an excellent problem solver, eager to learn, and loves the challenge. This year, he has done two PBL projects that he has shared with his classmates. One project involved showing how an engine works, and the other one involved drones. Kishan is a robot who appears and kind to all students. He is a Center Volunteer Crew member and helps Mrs. Beppe Dudo's classroom with a variety of jobs in the morning. He's also a very talented artist, and his drawing will be on the cover of our Center Yearbook this year. Center School is very lucky to have such an exemplary student on our fifth grade team. Congratulations for being one of our spotlight students. We need to take a picture with the family. Come on up.
I think you can give the board numbers first.
All right. Our second student that I am very proud to introduce and to talk about for a little bit is Ms. Anuja Patgril. And Anuja is a role model for all cyclones. She is someone who makes other students smile. She's a silent leader that makes her peers feel very comfortable and very confident. During her fifth grade weekly lunch bunches, everyone wants to be near Anuja because she's so kind-hearted, or she's such a kind-hearted friend. As the months have gone by, we have learned that she can be silly, caring, easy to talk to, and kind to everyone. She is very proud of her Center Volunteer Crew job, helping in Mrs. Humphrey's room, and she demonstrates responsibility by showing up on time for her job and helping the third graders with a variety of tasks. She's an outstanding student and makes fifth grade fun for anyone lucky enough to be around her. So congratulations, Anuja, for being one of Center's Spotlight Students.
All right, another question. Ms. Grossak, and then Lauren. All right, and family.
Next, we have Harper Wilcox, who's a little nervous. She should be proud. We are very lucky to have Harper Wilcox in our Cyclone family. She's been recognized for her perseverance, her kindness, and collaboration with others. Her confidence and participation in class has continued to grow all year. We love seeing her slow smile, which we see right now, too, when she does well on her tests, and her determined look when she perseveres through something that's tough. Harper's a Center Volunteer Crew member and does a wonderful job helping in Mrs. Beppe Dudo's second grade classroom. Harper's also the type of fifth grader who cares about her peers. She notices when someone is having a bad day and, without anyone looking, makes sure that each person is included. Harper embodies the portrait of a wildcat through her diligent studies, caring communication with others, and willingness to take on any challenges that come her way. Congratulations, Harper, on being one of Center's Spotlight Students.
All right. At this time, we're going to have an opportunity to introduce two staff members that were nominated by their peers this year. And our first staff member that we would like to recognize or to spotlight is Ms. Dana Gallio. All right. Ms. Gallio is a shining star here at Center School. As one of our third grade paraprofessionals, she goes above and beyond to help every student reach his or her fullest potential. She's an integral part of the team and helps to support students with reading fluency, math skills, writing, test-taking, self-regulation, social skills, and much, much more. She is always willing to collaborate with the teachers to assist however is needed, and there isn't a concept or strategy that she isn't willing to learn in order to support others. Ms. Gallio is always thinking of ways to connect with her students. For example, during a recent math unit, she found a fun way to bring fraction concepts to life by taking or talking to students about fractions as they were eating their lunches. Her caring demeanor often makes her one of our students' first choices when support is needed academically or during a difficult situation. Whether it is a shoulder to lean on or reteaching a concept, her focus is always on helping others. Ms. Gallio puts her heart and soul into Center Elementary, and we are happy to share the love right back with her tonight. Congratulations, Ms. Gallio, on being one of Center's Spotlight Staff.
The next staff member we'd like to spotlight is Mrs. Eich. Mrs. Schultz's passion and love for Center and Mayfield City Schools began over 40 years ago, when she started as a student at Center Elementary. She was a model student and athlete during her time in Mayfield and was the portrait of a wildcat before it even existed. Those are her team's words, by the way. Now, as she continues her career in Mayfield, she goes above and beyond to help and support her students, PLC members, colleagues, administration, and community members. Mrs. Schultz goes above and beyond to collaborate with colleagues and parents to develop plans that support her students' varied needs. She works tirelessly to build relationships, design assessments, analyze student data, and create meaningful learning experiences for her students. Her focus is always on helping those around her growth. Mrs. Schultz also welcomes the opportunity to give students a voice in helping to create a positive learning environment within our school. She leads our Center Volunteer Crew, a group of fifth graders, to provide assistance in classrooms, hallways, shared spaces, and our main office. This year, she also worked with a group of students to design the Sparkle Team. The Sparkle Team helps to promote taking care of our school environment through a weekly Golden Dustpan Award. Mrs. Schultz continuously advocates for a positive collaborative and solution-focused approach to any hurdles that arise, and she's always willing to try out new and creative ideas. Her leadership in our I L T, PLC steering committee, and student volunteer efforts is always aimed at promoting supportive and forward-thinking. She's the epitome of Mayfield. Congratulations to Mayfield.
Everybody say "Eddie."
All right. We have one more recognition. It is always hard to select our spotlight students and staff members because everyone works so hard and everyone plays such an important role in our team. This year, we asked our staff members to nominate one another for the Board of Education Spotlight. Along with Mrs. Gallio and Mrs. Schultz, we have several other people who are nominated for this recognition as well, and we'd like to have you come up for a group picture as well, and thank you for your positive contribution to our school. So if you could come up now, if your name is on the board, please come on up if you're here. All right. And I'd like to thank Bobby. Thank you so much for doing our Eddie Works stuff. Next, we put together a short highlight video that shows the portrait of a wildcat here in Center.
So I apologize for the delay, Bobby, but no, you're not involved. Just as one final token of our appreciation, our fourth graders right now are designing bubble ones and using a 3D printer to print them. So they design each of you your own specialty filled bubble one. They don't all fit in the green hole, so that's why you're a pup. Thank you for having us here today. We really appreciate it.
This is pretty exciting, especially as spring is on its way, today officially. All right. So that does bring us to Community Communications. Yes. I'll tell you what, before we do that, let's give this a five-minute break so that for those that need to go home and get their studies done, you're welcome to. If you want to stay, please, please do. All right, back to business. For Community Communications, Mr. Canider just let me know there were no requests, so we move on to President's Announcements. Today, first day of spring, can't believe the school year is rapidly coming toward the conclusion with all of the bright skies and sunny things going on. Great bubbles just made today. Perfect, I will say. I really don't have much else than that. Oh, yes, I do. Yeah. The solar eclipse, of course, will happen before our next board meeting, so everybody enjoy safely. And I will move to Superintendent's announcements.
Thank you, Madam President. The only announcement that I have is the desire to wish the Mayfield family a happy spring break, which begins at the end of this week.
Next, we have the Focus Forward Mayfield pillar update.
Sure. We had the opportunity to talk a little bit prior to the meeting, had our coffee discussions about the upcoming state assessments that's happening this coming April. Five indicators, the district is a five-star district from last year. We wish our students and staff the very best on the other side of spring break as we embrace the assessments this spring.
All right, and before we move on, I will ask which two board members would like to do next month's pillars? I'm happy.
Oh, either of them.
Okay, me and I will do that.
I'm always there if you need me.
Okay.
And that is from...
Innovation Center. Okay. And so that moves us to Board Member Committee Reports. Are there any reports at this time?
Madam President, I have one for reporting on the Mayfield Schools Foundation. As I reported last month, I am currently chairing the Swing and Party event being held at Top Ball Cleveland on Sunday, April 21st. We are still seeking sponsorships, and bays are still available for purchase. We are also seeking donation prizes for Rappel. Again, the foundation is merging with the Mayfield Alumni Association. I currently sit on that board, so I get the best of both worlds, but it's always a great event. We have 27 bays that we rent out, I should say rent out, we sell. It's great. It's a great community event, great for Wildcat supporters, friends, alums, community leaders, just supporters in general, great camaraderie. You get to golf, there's food. It's just a really fun event. So as we come into our fourth year on this and hoping it will be another sellout as it has been in past years. Thank you.
And you don't have to be a golfer to go.
No.
In fact, there are many people who don't even pick up a club, but just enjoy. All right. That moves us to the Superintendent's Consent Agenda, items A through O, motion to approve.
So move. Second.
Madam President, if I might just wish Ms. DeNigris, who's retiring, is an employee. She's served the land and community since 1997. We wish her the very best in her retirement.
Roll call.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Ms. Panaro.
Yes.
Ms. Greed.
Yes.
Ms. Grossak.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Next, in other Superintendent's business, we have textbook and material recommendation. Motion to approve.
So move.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Ms. Panaro.
Yes.
Ms. Greed.
Yes.
Ms. Grossak.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
And the approval of the 2024-25 Middle School Course of Study.
So move. Second.
I would like to point out on that that there are significant changes in the new course ads. It's just essentially updating dates, just meaning typos, et cetera. They're very mysterious, and I can present Dr. Distino. Well, he told me that he pretends to be that.
I'm on television only. Roll call.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Ms. Panaro.
Yes.
Ms. Greed.
Yes.
Ms. Grossak.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Moving to the Treasurers Report, we have the financial statements for the month ending February 29, 2024. Motion to approve.
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Ms. Panaro.
Yes.
Ms. Greed.
Yes.
Ms. Grossak.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
And financial transactions, motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
I would just like to mention, I was asked today, what exactly is a financial transaction? The board has the authority to establish budget levels. I do not. It's not something that's within my purview of power. What you're typically doing is increasing financials or increases, pluses or minuses to certain fund, fund balances. So think of it in terms of the original corporations approved in September. These are adjustments along the way based on revenue unexpected purposes identified. So you have the authority to do that. So when I bring these to you, it's basically with an explanation, it's just simply an adjustment to that budget of value or fund purpose.
Next, we move to donation.
I need to come up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's roll.
Roll call.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Ms. Panaro.
Yes.
Ms. Greed.
Yes.
Ms. Grossak.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Now we can move to donations, my favorite. I guess that's why we're so excited. Motion to approve. So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Ms. Panaro.
Yes.
Ms. Greed.
Yes.
Ms. Grossak.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
And now we move to the presentation.
Yeah, I have a presentation I'd like to provide to the board. I'd like to hand out a copy of the members that are present ahead of about 15 or 16. If some of you please tell me. It's going to be very brief, but I think it's important. I have a copy of the presentation here at the board table. I'm not going to use the panel. I'm just going to do a page turn on it, make significant highlights, entertain any questions, and move from there. I'll wait until these get around, and then I'll begin. So it's also on the board docs webpage, website, so you can access it there. Or if you got it around to... Excellent. So one of the topics that I... So this is, the title of the presentation is "Impact of Reappraisal on Local Property Taxes." For those that may or may not know, Caga County is in the midst of what's called a reappraisal. Every six years, the county...
is in the midst of what's called a reappraisal. Every six years, the county auditor is required by Ohio, the Ohio Vice Code to walk through the listing of properties by zip code and by geographic area to determine whether or not they're appropriately valued for tax purposes. This is important to ensure that the properties are maintained and leveled so that an warranted transaction is one of the measures by which a bona fide purchaser of a property can assess, is this truly within the market range rather than just simply looking at a single tenant or recent sales transaction. So what we're gonna focus on today is, if you flip to the very next slide, why am I talking about this? What's the significance of this to Mayfield? The pie chart very simply is there to indicate that 88 cents of every dollar collected comes from local property taxes to fund our operations. It's a very significant revenue stream for us. We watch our, basically our tax base, those properties in our four communities very closely, so it's basically to indicate how important that is. Going to the next slide where it's the real property taxes formula, let's talk about how are we taxed in Ohio? You have a fair market value, so let's say it's $100,000, that's what your property's worth on the open market, if we sell it, it's taxed at 35% of that value. So it's called the assessment rate. That is then multiplied by the tax rate. There are two tax rates in Ohio. One is called inside millage, or that which is established by the Ohio Constitution, and then everything else is considered voted, so unvoted versus voted millage. We're gonna talk specifically about voted millage here in a second, but as properties appreciate, we're gonna demonstrate in a moment that voted millage is reduced so that the end product is essentially the same, but the distribution of those taxes can and do look different. So let's show an example of what the basic tax formula looks like in Ohio, or at least in our district. So I've got a little graphic there that shows a little property. Auditor's fair market value is $100,000, times 35%, it's $35,000, that is the assessed value and the taxable value. The voted effective millage for Mayfield City Schools is .04678, or 46.78 is typically how we describe that when we talk to voters. A mill is just simply an expression of taxation. So if you take that millage rate times 35,000, the school tax bill for a property in Mayfield is $1,637.11 currently. So you can multiply that by two, by three, if your home is worth any increment of $100,000, of course. However, there are other taxes on the tax duplicate for things like city government, county government. Caga County Community College has a tax rate that we also pay. So there's another 32.28 mills that are taxed or applied to that $100,000 tax or value home. So $1,129.76 goes someplace else, not to the district. So this taxpayer would pay $2,766 in total, and you can see that more than half of that would come to us. So it's important to note that the tax rate was adjusted not just simply for us but for others as well. If I can flip to the next page, this is actually somebody's tax bill in our district. So I'm just gonna try to orient you, if you look at the top of the sheet, you can see assessed value, market value. So you can see that the total market value for this property is $286,900. The assessed, the assessment or the assessed value is $10420, so it's approximately 35% of that value. You can see that the rate falling down in the middle of the page, the total tax rate, effective tax rate for our district, not our district, for this taxpayer, including school taxes, county taxes, city taxes, is 79 mills, 79.05. There is, so the tax bill's a little bit confusing because they show taxes calculated on the gross, they arrive at a reduction, so I'm asking you to go to the left-hand side where it says happier charge amounts. The gross, the gross tax, and this is, they do this in half-year increments, because you pay your taxes in two halves. You can see the gross tax of $6,386, that's the full vote, that's the full vote rate. The 920 reduction, we're gonna talk about that in a minute, and the taxes are thereby reduced by 2,0417 to arrive at a net. So what does that mean? That means that because of inflation or growth, the tax rate is reduced on carryover property, so it generates the same amount of tax revenue year over year. So this is to demonstrate that, here's what the full tax rate is, here's what the effective tax collection is. And that's a little confusing, Tax Law Ohio is a little, a little confusing, more than a little. Then there's also two other credits. There's a 10% rollback for, and that was passed in 1972, I believe, when the state implemented the state income tax collection or income tax return or rate. And there's also a home set reduction, so there's a 93, there's a more than a $400 reduction in that tax bill, and then there's an assessment, we'll talk about that in a moment as well. So you can see the happier charge amount. So in this year, for this particular person, they're gonna pay $3,663.79 per half. So that's not the total amount collected for the year, per half, for all the taxes associated with Mayfield County and City. And this is Mayfield Heights, by the way. Each city has its own tax rate. So if you actually multiply that by two, the taxes, $4,286.56 will come to the district, that's 60% of the tax bill. So people like to say, well, all the property taxes go to the district. The answer to that is no, that is false. Moving down the page, and where I highlighted in yellow, local assessments. Year over year, there are, let's see, I think there are subcommittees of city governments that can't establish an assessment for certain improvements like sewers, sidewalks, lights. Those are not voted by the people, those are empowered by that subcommittee of city government, and that gets added to the tax bill if approved. So oftentimes, I'll get a phone call that says, my tax bill went up $187.50, I thought there was no additional tax on the duplicate, there wasn't. Let's look at your tax bill. Oh wait, your municipality assessed you because they recently put in new sidewalks. The answer is yes, we're now paying for those. So that's the confusing part of taxes in Ohio. I'm gonna flip the page, and this thing looks really busy, it's very, so I'm gonna talk about this, and I've highlighted this number of sections, exactly. I think this is done intentionally by Ohio. Let's, let's break this down, and I'm gonna try to go quickly, but hopefully make some sense of it. So you can see the taxing district at the top left is Mayfield Heights City, Mayfield Heights City Schools here, that's what we're known as on the tax duplicate. Everything highlighted in yellow below that, Caga County has 14.85 voted mills. Mayfield City Schools in green is 90.67, that is the total voted, not the effective. Mayfield Heights City has 10 mills. The Cleveland Metropolitan is 2.75. Cleveland, the Caga County Library, 3.5. The Community College, 5.3, and finally, the Cleveland Court Authority is .13, for a total of 127.2 voted mills. I wanna ask you then to go to the, to the next highlighted section at the bottom of that page, that millage rate has been reduced to 79.05. So from the time in which those were passed to present, as properties appreciate, the millage rate is reduced, so the taxes collected on carryover property remains the same. That's the basic concept, and I'll show you what that looks like in a moment. But if you notice, there's a lot of other taxing entities in Mayfield City Schools. I'm gonna ask you then to look to the right of the page, where I've got two shaded boxes. I found this to be very, very interesting. I'm gonna talk about Mayfield City Schools in isolation. So in 1976, back when House Bill 920 was implemented, the effective tax rate would equal the voted tax rate, because there was no reduction at that point, was 37.47 mills. In 1976, because inflation was running rampant, they passed a law that simply reduced the tax rate based on growth and carryover property, so that the net effect was essentially the same, so the district was receiving these large increases in taxes. We have passed since 1976, 10 operating levies, 10, to only increase that effective tax rate for operations only by one mill. So all we've been trying to do is set this level that existed in 1976 to be for 920 was put in place. And if you look at most school taxes in school districts from that point to forth, that's all we've been doing. Our, our revenue does not grow with inflation because of 920. That was, that's the whole purpose of demonstrating that. And I can walk, in fact, the millage from 1976, and I'm gonna try to direct you to, if you look at 1976, current expense, it was 32.45, do you see that on the sheet? Next to, under the Mayfield City School District, the green horizontally shaded area, go down to 32.45. I'm looking for nods. That is currently being collected, the effective rate is 5.29. So those 32.5 mills are being reduced by 83% to yield an effective rate of 5.29. That's 920 in essence. That's the impact of that, of that legislation. I'm gonna flip the page because this is awfully complex, just try to look at, try to simplify it a little bit, I got a few more graphics on here. So at the top, this is, what happens in reappraisal? So I'm gonna show you two different scenarios and two different outcomes. Three different types of property at the top of the page. You can see the property to the left is $100,000, to the right it's $200,000. You can see the assessment rate's 35%. You can see those calculations underneath. So if you add up all those taxes, the school receives $6,576. Everybody see that? That's to collect to get up all those blue, those blue numbers. Let's assume there's a 10% reappraisal, and, and that reappraisal is assessed on the average growth to the property, meaning the average growth by property, if it's 10%, then that is, would reduce, so that the effective millage rate is reduced by 10%. It's based on the average, and I'll demonstrate that in a moment. So property two increased based on the average by 10%. The millage rate's reduced by 10%, but property one only appreciated by 5%, and property two appreciated by 15%. Or property three, excuse me. Property three pays $102 more than it did the prior year, whereas properties one and two collectively are paying $102 less. And the net effect to the district is still $6,576, the same as it was the year before, so the total change is zero. Because the tax rate is reduced based on the average growth of property, they take all of them, average it, reduce the tax rate, and then where you fall relative to the average determines if you pay less, more, or approximately the same. Now, the person in property three's gonna call me and say, wait, my taxes went up. That's how reappraisal has typically worked. I'm gonna show you another scenario, so if you flip the page, same concept applied, but this time, the average was 7.5%. The property one appreciated by 50%. Property three, zero, and property two, 10. Property one saw a $566 increase in taxes, property three, a $548 reduction in taxes, because they base it on the average. So what we're seeing in Ohio, particularly in a lot of urban settings, is a lot of commercial groups are coming in, investment investors, buying up capes and bungalows, flipping them, which is causing a disproportionate increase in property values within these, within these concentration, concentrations of property. And this is a real-life phenomenon that's occurring. We're seeing huge tax swings in areas where the properties aren't, were worth once $100,000, and now they're worth $130, $140, $150, but it's a redistribution of where the tax, who's paying that tax. Because the market has been the wild, wild west. The housing stock was disrupted because new construction was limited. You saw a lot of folks watching a lot of TV shows where they're looking at fixer-uppers and trying to flip homes, and that's now become where the market exists. So watching that very closely because our fellow communities are distinctly different and have actually have this kind of property stock in all three. I'm gonna now ask you to look at another example, and this is new construction in addition to a home. So really, we do see growth in taxes on new constructions, considering new to the tax duplicate. So in this example, you can see that the existing property had a $50,000 addition, and that resulted in $578 more dollars in tax revenue to the district based on that addition. However, a reappraisal scenario, it saw a reduction of 80 on the existing property. So this is complex stuff, but you can see in basic terms how new construction and carryover property and reappraisal and property appreciation can affect who pays what taxes depending on how you are, your property's appreciated relative to the average. The final example is a vacant lot. So land is valued and taxed at the same rate as anything else that's within the residential property realm, but if you put something new on top of it, and we don't have a whole lot of vacant land for new construction left in the district, you can see in this example that that new construction will generate an increase of $3,909 if the new, new construction is valued at $300,000. Okay, there aren't a lot of $300,000 homes being built, at least left in our, our district. So just some examples of how the property, property taxes work. But reappraisal is gonna be very, I think, confusing to some folks because the district will not realize any real increases in, in tax revenue because of reappraisal, maybe a tax redistribution possibly. We hope that most of the properties appreciate around me, and therefore everyone can see uniform reduction, and that it won't be that confusing to them. Questions, because it's kinda some heady stuff, I tried to simplify it, it's not simple. And especially when you look at, the one page of all the tax rates, that comes from county auditor, anybody can access that information, and that's how confusing it is when you see it. And if you look at your tax bill, it's equally as confusing because you pay in halves, and they calculate it based on the full rate per half, and they show all these reductions. And they don't tell you where the taxes are going. So, any questions, any comments?
I'm guessing that the tax auditor, there's a highlight for you.
Uh, no, that was my continued.
Thank you.
I think the most telling thing is since 1976, 10 additional operating levies, all that time, effort, energy to only gain one mill, an actual tax, actual effective rate. So hard to believe, right? Yes, sir?
The example used for the municipalities, the sidewalks, sewers, that doesn't go away, like if sidewalks are completed on any given year?
It, it does, when the sidewalks...
Or if, or if the city has an ongoing sidewalk program and they cut the city in quarters, and it's, every year, does it just stay there, or does it change?
So the sidewalks, if they're unique to your property and your, your, so the assessment, if they put sidewalks in front of your home, you'd be the one that would be assessed.
Okay.
Not necessarily anyone else that lives in Highland Heights. So that assessment is placed, typically they place it on for, I don't have a link normally, but it might be within one or two tax periods, and once that assessment is paid, then it falls off.
Thank you. Currently, there's a sidewalk program in Mayfield that is not costing the residents one penny.
Depends on the municipality. Mayfield Heights has 10 charter mills, whereas Highland Heights has four. So there's difference, differentiation between, between that, the millage in Mayfield Heights is all what's considered charter millage, so it's not subject to 920, whereas I think Gaines Mills has 12 mills, but outside of two of them, they're all subject to 920, so they, they, that gets reduced. It, it even gets more complex in, in when you dive into city and county government.
Which are not impacted by 920.
Some are, some aren't, depending, it depends on the way the charter was written and the way the millage was presented. Pension, police, police and fire pension, millage is not subject to 920. But I think that's part of the charter. Debt millage, bond millage is not subject to 920, it's basically subjected to the debt table that is related to the, to the millage when it was passed. So they adjust that rate to match the debt table that was developed at the time in which it was, the debt was issued. It's confusing, because I wish I could simplify it. Maybe I could have the kids help me with some kind of, some kind of lunch and learn.
Maybe, maybe I should, you could do a simpler one, like tell us how the school funding formula works.
The sad thing is, I wish it could be simple and simpler.
It should be.
It should be. The tax code, even evaluation challenges impacts this as well. If I challenge about my property, the county auditor is not waiting until the next year to adjust the tax rate, or they refund the taxpayer immediately, which comes out of current collections. We're seeing a lot of movement there in what's considered Class II or commercial industrial property. We have a lot of commercial space that's vacant. And so they're challenging to value that, that asset or that property, and that's a whole different kind of valuation conversation.
I would say especially too, you know, during the pandemic and such, the, yeah, the wild, wild west, the overly inflated prices that people are paying for their homes, and I imagine there were going to be some people going back on, you know, the actual appraised value of their home.
Yeah, I mean, we had the, yes. So the Great Recession caused the county to uniformly lower the values of properties. If you recall back in about 2016 to 2018... If you recall back in about 2016 to 2018, we were coming out of the, you know, the mortgage crisis. Everybody was going to challenge the value of their properties because nothing was, nothing was selling. They lowered the values artificially across the board to basically get ahead of that. And then all of a sudden we had obviously COVID and it disrupted the whole chain again. And now there's bidding wars, which then does actually set the market value of all homes or just at that particular point in time. Your mortgage rates are starting to rise. So the cost of capital is going to start impacting the value of homes. This thing, it's not, there's nothing in isolation. It's all interconnected and it's not a simple conversation. Other than to say, it doesn't matter what happens with a sale on an existing property and if that value goes up, the millage rate, the tax rate is going to be reduced. So we get the same money. That is, that is the, that is the essence of this conversation. Reappraisal is going to see an increase in property values, redistribution of who pays the taxes, but we will not get more. So our levy cycles and what we've been discussing stays, remains intact and that's still the trajectory. We're not seeing really any significant growth. We are just simply seeing a redistribution of where the taxes are coming from.
So the fact that we've gone eight years, it's pretty amazing.
With all of the upheaval and all of the disruption and stay at home, folks are working from home and the change in the economy, yes. I would say the last public decade, 10 years has been, it's been phenomenal change. There's, you want consistency, there is consistency.
City of Mayfield Heights in June, July had over 700 transfers of houses, people moving in from the city. Gil and I had the opportunity to talk to some. And the basic reason that they moved was to go to our school. That's it. It's the bottom line. So it's very important that these, all of our suburbs, no matter if they're in Haddon Heights or the village, they're moving because of the school.
It was my best effort to present the tribe. It's just.
I usually go cross-eyed if nothing's there.
I felt like I was getting contacted.
You didn't.
All right. So we will move on to other treasures business. And the minutes of the regular board meeting of February 28th, 2024, motion approved.
So move.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Tressi. Ms. Fenaro.
Yes.
Ms. Freed.
Yes.
Ms. Brosa.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
And the meetings, the board policy committee meeting of February 27th, 2024. I will then move to that.
Second.
I think for the sake of just sharing, so the community is not confused by this, is the fact that this is a subcommittee of the board. And I have asked the board members who were present at that meeting to abstain from voting since they were not present to confirm whether those minutes were accurate. And so therefore, when you hear the roll call, you're going to hear a lot of the presentations and that's the reason why. It's because Mr. Fenaro and Ms. Brosa weren't attended, weren't in attendance and they actually can validate whether or not that's really what was being stated. So. And by law, we would only allow to have two board members get that function. That's why we weren't, it sounded like we were out partying.
Like.
Right. And that was part of the organizational meeting at which Ron and Sue were appointed and approved to be on that committee. So very well stated.
It's always a little confusing. Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Tressi.
Epstein.
Mr. Fenaro.
Yes.
Ms. Freed.
Epstein.
Ms. Brosa.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Epstein.
All right. And that moves us to the Health and Parks Studies, number 49, motion approved.
So move.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Ms. Fenaro.
Yes.
Ms. Freed.
Yes.
Ms. Brosa.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
And the financial statement for conversion services auditor state.
Actually.
I'm sorry, I missed one. Thank you. The tax, tax rate resolution for the year 2024.
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Right. Well, this is just basically taking all those voted taxes. This is a minister, ministry motion and authorizing the county auditor auditor to collect on the effective rates. This is an annual requirement. Does this not impact reappraisal, what we're talking about? It's just simply saying we're authorizing you to apply these tax rates once determined what the effective rate is on the properties that exist in Mayfield City Schools. So.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Ms. Fenaro.
Yes.
Ms. Freed.
Yes.
Ms. Brosa.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Now we'll try the financial statement conversion services, Mr. Tressi.
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Ms. Fenaro.
Yes.
Ms. Freed.
Yes.
Ms. Brosa.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
And the 2024 to 2025 consumable Ds for K through 12, motion approved.
So move.
Second.
There's about five Ds that have changed, which would stand every year in a reflective attachment. So you can see what was, what was actually modified. Not, not many.
No, it was not.
It might have been, yeah, there might have been one within the art area that might be a little.
There were two new courses.
Thank you.
Just scrolling.
I didn't get to see the final part. They said, we at least do a comparison in, in Ms. Freed's one.
No, you know, I read it.
Roll call.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Ms. Fenaro.
Yes.
Ms. Freed.
Yes.
Ms. Brosa.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
And in other board business, we have the whole Ohio High School Athletic Association Resolution for 2024 and '25.
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Tressi.
Yes.
Ms. Fenaro.
Yes.
Ms. Freed.
Yes.
Ms. Brosa.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
The next item is the first reading. No, no action needs to be taken, but I feel like I should say one. And I will be happy to entertain any questions that anybody may ask. So that moves us to a German. Let's move to a German.
So move.
Roll call.
Mr. Tressi. Ms. Freed.
Yes.
Ms. Brosa.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.